Ask you for this or did he?
Yes, Tess. Civilants. One, two.
Check. Check one, two. That was me, Michael. I do have a radio voice, actually. You could hire me for that.
Okay. I don't know.
I call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, and good morning. And we'll start with accentuate the positive.
Good morning. This is Catherine Holden from Talent Middle School. I don't know if the, is the camera gonna come my way? I was trying to stall. I don't have, I mean, I don't have to be on camera, but. There we go, woo. Uh, good morning. Welcome back, everybody. It's fun to have everybody here again, back to back. I feel like we just had a board meeting here. We just, we just did this two weeks ago, so. Thank you so much for being here again, um, and we're excited. We're gonna be having some of our seventh and eighth grade students join us here around ten thirty. They have a few questions for the board, and we're excited to hear the answers from the board members. Uh, over the last couple of weeks, we just wanted a big shout out. There's been a lot of, it's been ongoing, actually, from the summer, but. The maintenance department has increased the amount of lighting within Talent Middle School quite a bit throughout the hallways in particular. And it really is making a huge difference. It just, when you walk in, first thing in the morning, uh, feels like we're supposed to be here. It feels like things are on and everybody's awake. And it really, it just makes for a, a feeling of this being, you know, a learning environment, a safe environment, and then an awake environment. So we want to thank everybody for that. Also, a big thank you to our high school team, Kent Valier, as well as Carolina Campbell. And Jordan Ruiz and the whole PHS Counseling Department. Their student link leaders came over last week, and they had a great experience for our eighth graders as we. Started to think about high school, started to think about that transition coming up, and starting to get our eighth graders really excited about that. And overall, um, having Jordan Ruiz then came back the last, this Monday and Tuesday and worked with our eighth graders again. So it was just a ni- nice partnership to have him here on campus and making sure they're starting to feel ready. Also, um, we had a track meet this week. It was a great experience for our students. It was an away meet, and we had twenty-four, in twenty-four events, we placed first. So. Some of those were relays, some of them were individual events, um, but it was just really exciting to come home with all those trophies, ribbons. And lastly, we wanted to thank Sergeant Lehman, Officer Hall, and the both Phoenix and Talent Police Departments for their partnership and dedication. We had a successful lockdown practice drill yesterday. And it just really, really feels good to have their support, and, um, Erica Ochoa did a great job of organizing that. And it, yeah, felt very professional, very well organized, um, and important to be able to do that, to be, to check our procedures. So. Uh, with that, thank you for being here, and I'm gonna pass it on to Dave.
Good morning, everybody. Dave Erhart, Phoenix High School. It has been busy, and it's only gonna keep getting busier. So Kalen sent along some stuff today, and then I have some stuff too from Athletics and Activities. Kalen says, okay, here are some talking points. No, we had a great visit a couple of weeks ago. Senator Wyden did one of his town hall visits. Uh, Brent was the MC for it, or moderator. Um, how many was that, Brent, that he's done now since being elected? It's some crazy number, uh, five hundredth some visit, but our kids were really engaged in it. Teachers brought kids down, and it was a really neat opportunity to see a really authentic government process taking place. So really pleased with that. We had that in the theater. Uh, some of our staff, several of our staff really helped pull things together. Uh, Maria Thompson has always helped coordinate, and Andrew, who does our facilities, uh, really takes charge of. Down with Athletics and Activities did a super job down there. We've done some pre-registration stuff. As Catherine alluded to, we've been, uh, interacting with our, uh, middle schoolers getting ready. Plus, we're getting our juniors ready to become seniors. Lots of things that they have to be doing right now, uh, getting ready for their next steps. So we started to meet with them. Again, Jordan Ruiz is doing the coordinating of that. We've got a senior night coming up, all those different things. Tonight's our first freshman versus families night for the, um, link crew. Carolina's doing a great job. Organizing that, starting some annual traditional events. Uh, the seniors, we're talking about caps and gowns already. Not already, it's coming up in less than two months, but. Um, all those things. We took our senior picture about a month ago. We've got the banner made for the class of twenty-three, so all those really cool things getting ready to take place. This is track and field week at Phoenix High School. Um, when we finished this facility a couple of years ago, John Cornet, as a lot of you know, uh, is super excited about that. Just does an amazing job. We hosted a meet on Tuesday that was supposed to be a dual meet. That turned into five teams. Uh, we have an invitational going, uh, starting tomorrow night where it's for eight hundred and three thousand runners. And then Saturday, huge fourteen-team invitational. We also have the ballet at the school on Saturday, a group renting the facility, and Manny's League Basketball. So if you're looking for parking at Phoenix High School on Saturday, you probably will not find it. Uh, spring sports are going well. We've got about a hundred and fifty kids involved. We've got some new coaches we've hired, uh, for next season. Winter GPAs, uh, athletic kids did really, really well. Our girls' swimming team, I think they were fifth in the state at three point eight-two. And the last thing I'll close with today, we have thirty-five three-sport athletes this year. So we're really pleased with that. During COVID, it was down as low as nineteen. Last year, we were up to twenty-four, but we have thirty-five kids who are playing three sports. And again, that's really what we all want to be about in education-based athletics, going beyond the scoreboard and giving them opportunities. Thank you, everyone.
Good morning, everybody. Heather Love from Talent. Um, just have a few things. Yesterday, we had our kinder launch at the elementary schools, which was really great. Um. At Talent, we had twenty-nine kinders come through, and typically we double that number in the fall, which is really good news for us at Talent. Um, so that was fun, and I just want to send a big thank you to everybody who's involved, you know. Pulling that event off is, um, it takes a lot of coordination team effort, so like especially for Cheryl in our office to just say thank you to her, and then there's a lot of other people out there that made that successful. Um, also, I want to share that we've been really closely monitoring attendance, which we've been trying to regularly update you on, and it's almost like, um, monitoring, like when you try to lose weight, it takes so long to lose weight. But you could just bump back up really quickly, right? And that's how we feel about attendance. We're like, oh, my God, we're doing so much. But I'm happy to share that, you know, since we really started this concerted effort, we've gone from. About sixty to sixty-one percent regular attendance up to, we're hovering around sixty-eight. So. Might not seem like a lot, but it's taken a lot of work and really just thankful for Alma up in our office, and she's helping to really, um, systematize and really checking with those kids, especially our chronic non-attenders. Also, um, I think I shared this last time, but it's testing season. I'm sure other people will talk about it. So we kicked off our state assessments this week and, um. Doing our show what you know showcase and every day really highlighting, um, how important it is to take these assessments seriously, that it is a skill that will carry on throughout their educational career. Um, we've got tons of parents bringing in snacks to help feed the, feed our brains, and so I want to say a special thank you to our sped. Team and our Title One team who are really pulling those kids who need a quieter environment to really do their best on these assessments. And then last but not least, I want to say a public thank you to Bill Adams. He's our lead custodian. He's been working alone the last couple of weeks, just by circumstances. Um, and he's just been putting in extra hours and making sure that we have our facilities nice and clean and ready for kids. So that's it from Talent.
Good morning, board. My name is Shauna Schleif, principal at Phoenix Elementary. Good to see you all. Um, I could echo everything that Heather says, and so I'm gonna try and come up with some different things to say, but ditto, and then some other things that, that she'll be like, hey, I want to ditto that back. And so I, I do want to say that Kinder Launch was a really great success. It's really fun to see students who are gonna be joining us next year and the energy that they have and the excitement of the families, um, to be joining us. We had several people, um, that are, are hoping to join from out of districts, so that felt really positive to, to know that people are really interested in coming to our schools. Um, and then also, uh, this is gonna start off our, our kind of kickoff to registration, so we're gonna try and get all of our returning students registered as well in the next coming weeks. And so I want to give a shout out to our front office staff because they're organizing a lot of events. Around things like kinder kickoffs and assemblies and things like that, and then we're also doing some work to, to get ready for next year as well. So big shout out to our front office staff. I also want to recognize, uh, Tatiana Ramos Gallardo and Allison Bailey because they started a new club at PES called the Neurodiversity Club. And so we had our event, our first meeting yesterday, and we had four students who came, and it's just a, um. A group of students to get together and, uh, and honor each other in a space of, um, oh, the word is, is, is. Uh, when they're all, yeah, yeah, affinity, that's the word that I was thinking of. Thank you. Um, and so they're doing some really, uh, fun projects through there, and so it was really fun to see that. And then last but not least, I also want to give a shout out to our PLC leads and our coaches right now. They've been working together to do some really solid work around our alignment, both vertical and horizontal, and so they've been, um, doing some. Um, meetings and, and, and just really tightening up some stuff, and so they've been working really hard around, uh, alignment of our new curriculum, so I want to give a shout out to district-wide PLC leads and our coaches. That's it from PES.
Hello, Brandon from Orchard Hill. I apologize for coming in late. Um, but there was a house fire, and I went in and rescued the people, and so I. Just kidding. Um, no, but, but really what it was is I had a teacher who was telling me about what she was gonna do in her lesson, um, and so it was all about nutrition. So she had literally blacked out her windows. She has mood music going on. And she has a server's like waitress outfit to like enhance the environment, so I could not not go. So I went and watched it, and it really was cool. They had a menu, and on there, they talk about like what food group this goes into, and whether they liked it, or it was just such a cool lesson. And it kinda brings me to, like, we're doing that, you know, we have testing going on, what a joy that is. Um, and other, you know, just all the stuff that's going on, but it's so neat right now at the end of the year to just see things gelling. It is just kinda cool. I've seen some adults that are kinda stepping it up in a way, and they're just choosing this path of like, you know, this positive vibe in the school, and at the end of the year, it feels so good because it is so busy. So that was my shout out, um, to Mrs. Fuller for the lesson, and then Diane and Judy, good grief, so much over the last little bit getting ready for Kinder Start. We actually had one more than Heather. We had thirty. Um, just kidding, we didn't. Um, but the goal is to have thirty by Friday. So that is my goal. I'm, I don't know how I'm gonna come up with the numbers, but we're gonna make it happen. So that's it from Orchard Hill.
Good morning, board. Aaron Santi, Phoenix Town Rising Academy. Quickly, um, I know you guys all had a chance to read Brent's, uh, most recent PTS Rising report talking about attendance. Um, so our attendance district-wide is hovering in that sixty-eight percent range, as Heather referenced. Um, so we decided to take a look at our numbers at PTRA. Um, we've got, uh. Average K to eight student attendance of ninety-five percent. Eighty-eight percent of our students are regular attenders, meaning they've got ninety percent or better attendance. Ninety-four percent of our elementary schools are regular attenders, and eighty-five percent of our middle schoolers are. So, um. We're very excited about those numbers. Uh, our attendance is a coordinated effort, the family engagement that includes our teachers and office manager. Um, we make attendance efforts as another way to make contact with families, including positive contact. Uh, our office manager sends home weekly. Thank you for your hundred percent attendance for students who receive that, as well as to their parents. So. Um, it's kind of a group effort with our teachers and office manager, and I want to thank them and thank the kids for putting that effort in, and that's it for me. That's tomorrow. Yep, ten, ten-thirty at Schneider. You can come, ten-thirty tomorrow, Schneider. It's free.
Thank you all so much. Anything from the board?
I just want to give a huge kudos to all of the effort, and, um. You'll hear me.
Yeah.
Oh, wonderful. Maybe it's me that I can't hear myself. That might be a good thing, too. Um, just huge kudos to all the folks that work really hard to put on the, um, health and wellness, um, resource fair this past weekend. It was really lovely to see so many people. Um, it was beautifully organized. I think Katie sent out a lot of information. It was really well put together. Um, the folks really enjoyed being there. People were really excited to get a lot of information, but also get a ton of goodies from the, um, the folks that came and provided not only like really great food. Great tacos, but also great information and resources to our community. So just well job, well done to everybody who, uh, participated, and I just think, I'm looking forward to continuing to have. That here in our community, especially like bringing resources to people at home always feels really nice. So thank you, Phoenix Elementary, and again, the rest of the team.
I'll speak up about, I'll let Sarah tell about the popsicles, but, um, I was able to attend the, uh, Ron Wyden event that was at the high school, and I was mostly grateful for. The student attendance there and the, and the questions that they ask and the experience that they had. Um, I, just from a personal note, uh, we, as a family, uh, visited the Capitol in Washington, DC. When we were doing that curriculum in elementary school for Celine, and we were just sitting in the hall, and he happened to walk up and say hello to us and didn't know we were from Oregon, um, and that was a long time ago. Um, and it was very interesting for them to s- experience that, I think, see him as so approachable and willing to tackle those difficult conversations. Anyway, I just really. You know, I'm probably the least political person on the planet, but I feel like it was such a great experience for those folks who were in the room there that day. I was grateful for that.
Just great event on Tuesday at, um, Phoenix High School, the track meet. Polly and I got to, um, be part of putting in the scores, and, um. We really asked John Cornet if he could make it warmer, and he just really didn't have that ability with as great of an event as he puts on. He just was not really able, um, to do that. So Polly pulled her chair closer to mine so that we could, um, at the end. You know, three flights of jav- it was, it was a big meet. It was really exciting to see the Pirates do well and all those, all the local schools. So super fun to hang out with Polly and, and support Phoenix High School Track.
I guess I should say something about the track meet. Yeah, I had the pleasure of working with Mr. Berry down here at the Long Gump Pit. He was magnificent with that rake. It smoothed things out. And I got to write it down on the book, and, and it was, I was really, it was, I was blown away. I, I attended Phoenix High School myself, and I ran track. And the track that they have today is unbelievable. I used to run on dirt, you know, and you, it, the lane you picked was the one with the least amount of holes. But, uh, i- i- it's a magnificent setting, and, uh. I'm really proud to be associated with our school district, and the high school is magnificent.
Just quickly, so many awesome things going on. Thank you all for the, for the updates. I, I had an opportunity to do the school tour with Senator Wyden before the town hall, and. First of all, it's so fun to walk around our high school and just be proud, um, and of the kids and our staff, and I have to say, you know, we, we did the tour, and. We went out back, um, to Mr. Ford's area. We visited all the CTE stuff, and, um, one of Mr. Senator Wyden's staff goes, my goodness, you guys have a lot of programs here. Um, and I said, yes, we do, and, um, it's really important to our community, um, and that's what we're fighting to keep, um, with, uh, all the legislative stuff going on and kind of the fiscal stuff that we're dealing with. We want to maintain our people and programs because they matter, and they help kids show up and, and make a difference. So, um, really, really, uh, neat experience and, uh, just proud of our, of all of our schools. So, good stuff. Yeah, go ahead.
My favorite event was Future Chefs. Congratulations to Phoenix Elementary. Uh, it's so fun to watch the principals compete with, with, but, um. Really great job, Amy and her team, um, for putting that all on and really getting to showcase the talents and skills of this elementary students in our district. Really, really one of my, probably one of my fa- I have a lot of favorites. One of my favorites in the district. So. Thank you, Amy, for, um, including me in that, and, um, congratulations to all the students.
Okay, I'm like pressuring Dawn. Everyone else spoke, Dawn. You gotta say something. Um, okay, uh, student representative report. Peyton, you're a rock star. Thanks for joining us. I'm not sure if you're in cla- supposed to be in class right now, but we're, we're glad you're here. Uh, did you have a report for us?
Uh, yeah, um, so first off, tonight, we, link crew has their first freshman versus families event, so we're really super stoked about that. So freshmen get to come, bring their families, and play dodgeball, play board games against each other. So it's gonna be a fun, it's gonna be a fun, relaxing night. I have a feeling. And then tomorrow is our kickoff assembly to prom and also birthday, so we're kind of, it's gonna be a big assembly. Um, there's gonna be the dance-off there, so the classes get to battle out and show off their dance teams. So that one's gonna be really fun to watch. And then grad night auction on May seventh at, uh, Stone River Winery. Um, tickets are on sale now for twenty bucks, but then they're twenty-five at the actual auction. And we're all getting really excited with that. Everything's pretty much done and ready. And then on actually May ninth, the FFA, the ag program, I should say, the, also all the ag classes. Are putting on the spring harvest for the elementary school kids, so they get to come and see different booths that these kids are making. So like there's booths about plants, bunnies. And we've even r- reached out to a couple of local farms to bring and have booths to teach elementary school kids more about agriculture and like careers and stuff in agriculture. So I have a feeling that that's gonna be really fun. Um, and we're just getting ready for that, and that's pretty much all I got.
Peyton, can I ask you a question? Um, about, are you, the plant sale, are there, is there a plant sale coming up? There's usually one in May. Do you know anything about it? I hate to, you know, one of the.
I'm not sure, but they still are gonna do their Mother's Day sale. I just don't, I can't, I don't think they have the dates yet, but they are still having to plan. They're planning it out now. I know that for sure. They are still having the plant sale, though.
And where is the elementary school where they're bringing the farm rabbits? I love rabbits.
It's actually gonna be at the high school. So all this is gonna be at the high school behind where like all the ag by the shop and all that, where all this is gonna be. So all the booths are gonna be, there's gonna be more animals there. Just I know that one of the rabbits is gonna be one. So it's gonna be really fun. Um, it's gonna be really fun. But yeah, it's all at the high school, and it's from nine-thirty to.
Perfect, thank you.
Dawn will have to hop on over there. Okay, um, citizens comments, pun really badly intended. I'm sorry. Um, okay, citizens comments. Do we have anyone besides Dawn? Okay, and I'm guessing Joe, did you want to say anything? Okay, all right, I'm hearing none. We will move on. Um, superintendent report.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. I just want to echo all the amazing things that you guys all shared and, and, and echo Nancy's comments about the health and wellness fair. I really just appreciate the team really seeing a need and putting something together, and it growing into something that was truly amazing. Over forty booths of community partners. Um, and look forward to really seeing how that grows throughout the year. That was a huge benefit for our. Families. Nice clarity direction. Our students will come here pretty quickly. Uh, only other thing I have is we're looking forward to, uh, reconstructing, uh, a health center, uh, for our partners at La Clinica, uh, at the high school. So we're doing some modifications to some spaces. Um, originally, we thought that funding was gonna be able to come from that mental. Um, originally, we thought that funding was gonna be able to come from that mental health grant that we received. There's some complications in that. Uh, and so we're diverting some of those funds to other areas in that grant. Um, so we're looking at some S R funding to be able to do that. Since it'll be over twenty-five thousand dollars, we'll have to bring that to the board uh, next time. And so we will um, have those plans and those uh, um, those uh, construction documents for you when we uh, meet next time for action. So, but that'll, it's turning out to be a really cool space and be able to help support mental and physical need, health needs for our students. That's it.
Very good. Any questions for Brent?
I do just want to say, I, I don't think we've had a full board at a day meeting in a long time, and I know that takes a lot of commitment. Uh, so thank you for all being here today. So that's fantastic.
Very cool. Thank you. Okay, I think our students are gonna be coming in in a couple of minutes, but we could probably get through the consent agenda.
Mm-hmm.
So uh, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
All right, hold on a second. All right, uh, any objections? Hearing done, the consent agenda is approved. We'll just keep rolling here. I think they're coming in in three minutes. So we'll move to uh, action items. ATI contracts.
Yeah, this was presented for review last time. We feel like we have a solid contract in here and um, you know, look, we're forward to working with ATI in the future and, and seeing how their transition kind of transpires um, as we continue to head into next year. So uh, thanks Tiffany Lambert and Summer for really diving into some of these things. And it's helped with our integrated guidance as we partnered as well.
All right, entertain a motion on the ATI contract.
I was, I was good. I moved to approve the contract renewal for ATI as presented for the period of July one, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Moved by Rick, seconded by Polly. Discussion. Hearing done, we will vote. Rebecca?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes. RFP Design Services, T S T M S Seismic.
Yeah, we uh, discussed this quite a bit last time and uh, what you see here is the scope that was reduced a little bit at the middle school to make sure we have the common areas um, as we got bids and, and uh, costs for that. Um, as many districts are seeing and in construction costs, it's escalated quite a bit. Uh, we feel like the high use areas will um, service well and then we'll continue to find opportunities for other parts of the talent middle school. The Talent Elementary is in still full scope. So that's what's presented today.
I have a quick question.
Right.
Um, so I, I asked Sarah. She told me, but I want to ask too, but um, so I see that if this is approved, would this happen in this coming summer or when is, I forgot what John?
Yeah, it would be next summer. Um, we've, we've paused it because um, we, just with materials, they're almost nine to twelve months out. And so we want to be able to have this design service ready to go and then we will bid these jobs probably in September for uh, summer of twenty twenty-four.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
A motion?
I move to award the contract for design services for T S and T M S seismic upgrades project to architect, design and architecture.
I second that.
Moved by Rebecca, seconded by Polly. Further discussion? Hearing done, we will vote. Rebecca?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes. And we will pause our action items here. Welcome, students. Thanks for joining us this morning. Damn, we got quite a crew this morning. Excellent. Well, welcome. We were just uh, voting on some of our action items and one of the what did we just vote on? Seismic. Uh, we're gonna do some seismic. Do you want to explain that a little bit for the students? So then we'll introduce ourselves.
Yeah, one of those items was uh, seismic upgrades and building improvements. Um, and you may know, but your parents definitely know. Uh, in two thousand seventeen, we passed a bond in our district and to really improve some facilities. And you'll see that throughout our district. If you've been to the high school where we've upgraded, built a brand new high school and did some athletic facilities. Um, it also includes some safety measures to uh, upgrade the seismic uh, in the event of a um, you know, earthquake, uh, getting those standards up to, to par. So it uh, we can have some space to uh, congregate and be at uh, area where, you know, buildings are up and safe and, and be able to kind of respond to that. So uh, some, when we award those million dollar contracts, the board has to approve that um, to be able to continue. And that's what they just did now. So thank you.
Pretty exciting as far as things go for us. So uh, I don't know if it was exciting for you, but well, just I want to welcome you all. My name is Michael Campbell. I'm the board chair. And I'll just, we'll just go through and have everybody introduce themselves, maybe share how long you've been on the board and why you volunteered to do this work. Um, so uh, Dawn, would you like to go next?
I'm Dawn Watson. I've been on the board for ten years. Um, both my boys went through the, from one started at Talent Elementary and graduated at Phoenix High School and one started at Orchard Hill and graduated at Phoenix High School. And I joined um, the board because I was a parent that was working in the classrooms and I wanted to help the district um, be better. And I had a child on I E P and I felt like at the time there wasn't a voice of a parent um, with a child with an I E P. And so I wanted to be on the board to kind of help um, students have a better education at Phoenix High School. For all the, actually all the schools.
My name is Rick Nagle and uh, I've been on the board since nineteen ninety-nine, so that's twenty-four years. And uh, I'm a graduate of Phoenix High School myself. I attended the Talent High School as well. And uh, the reason I'm on the board, it's uh, I had a business in Ashland. I was very active in Ashland. And, but I lived in Talent. I live up Wider Creek Road. And uh, I wanted to be part of our community here. So when I saw there was an opening on the school board, I, I opted for that. Yeah, because I do believe strongly in public education and uh, I just want to contribute to society, society and in particular to our youth. All of you sitting here, it's uh, you're my kids.
Hi, good morning. I'm Sarah Crawford. I've been on the school board since two thousand sixteen. I usually say the date because then I don't have to do them to remember how many years. It's just easier to say since two thousand sixteen. I have um, three graduates um, from Phoenix High School and they went through um, the district. And uh, when I joined um, the board, uh, we were getting ready to go up for the bond and um, most everyone um, in the room knows that I would love for our district to have a swimming pool. And um, I didn't know you weren't, weren't supposed to come to the board without an agenda, but um, I know that now. And I really worked the best as swimming pool students in your education process. Anyway, I wanted to see at the board table so that um, I could help uh, with the bond process. And we still have a swimming pool, but everyone knows that. Anyway, um, so I am a total groupie. Invite me to your stuff. I love to come see you guys um, in your sports or band concerts or activities. Just really um, appreciate being part of this board and um, the opportunity to help provide the best education experience for you.
Good morning. I'm Nancy McInnes and I have been on the board for two and a half years. And um, my kids also went through the Phoenix Town School District, started at Talent Elementary and two of them have graduated from Phoenix High School and I still have one in Phoenix High School. And the reason why I joined the board is I wanted to create a place where um, people feel heard and seen and like people belong. And I love that there's differences among us and I think um, representation is really important. So how does somebody who might look like you or speak a similar language than you or as you um, come and help and inform and create positive changes so kids can feel valued and seen and um, appreciated and cared for. So this is why I'm here. It's really nice to meet you all.
Hi, I'm Polly Fairmond. I went to Talent Elementary, Talent Junior High at the time and Phoenix High School. Um, I've always been an active member of our community. I've lived in Talent my whole life. Um, I have two daughters that have graduated from Phoenix High School. Um, I joined the board two years ago. Um, the reason, I think what kicks, I was always actively involved, but I think what kickstarted me into that was the fires that happened that I watched from my home that took a lot of our community. And it was really hard to see how that impacted our families. So I've been trying to do everything I can to help bring those families back to our area and help those who have been affected. So that's probably what spurred me on, but also serving in this community is important to me. And it just makes me happy to see all of you here. Thanks for being here.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Weathers. I've been on the board for two years. Um, I have two daughters that go to Talent Elementary School and then I have one daughter who graduated from Armadillo Tech. Um, I joined the board mostly because of COVID and the fires that happened. And I like the way the district handled our community in that situation. And I wanted to be a part of that as well as not being able to be a part of the actual, like volunteering in classrooms and things like that. I wanted to be a bigger part of the school like I was before COVID. Yeah, so that's why I joined.
Um, my name is Peyton. I'm a senior at Phoenix High School. I've only been on here a year. And I joined the board because I really wanted to give more of a student's point of view and a student's voice to the board. And um, I really felt like I would um, would bring something good because, uh, because I listen to all the students and I could bring it to the board. So that's why I joined.
Yep, Peyton is one of our student reps. So every year the board appoints um, sometimes two or three student reps to the board um, from the high school. Um, so if that's something that you're interested in, you could look into that uh, when you get to the high school. So pretty cool. I'm gonna have uh, Superintendent Barry and Denise introduce themselves as well.
Yeah, my name is Brent Barry. I'm your superintendent uh, which oversees all the schools and the district operations and um, have a good fortune to have seven bosses to learn from. Um, and I am their employee uh, to manage the district. And Denise uh, is my assistant, but also the uh, assist uh, administrative assistant for the board as well. So, thanks for being here today and, and uh, the board always enjoys uh, hearing from the kids and and getting to know you a little bit and answer your questions. So.
Awesome. And again, uh, my name is Michael Campbell. I'm the board chair and I have a kindergartner at Orchard Hill and a two-year-old who'll be attending someday. Looking forward to saving on the daycare, but got a ways for that. Um, I joined the board because I just care about our community and am extremely passionate about public education and making sure that every kid has an opportunity um, to fulfill their full potential. So uh, that's why I joined. Um, before, I know you have some questions. I have a question for you all. Does, would anyone, and I see that Mrs. Holden has a microphone there. So if anyone's feeling grave, does anyone want to tell me what the school board does or why we exist? Anyone want to take a stab at that?
Hey, while you're thinking about that, right? I just want to introduce, this is a group of uh, seventh and eighth graders in a creative writing class that Ms. Tringleau teaches. Um, so these students get to be part of a really kind of enriching class. They're hard workers. They're leaders in our community. Um, and they've done some amazing writing this year as well. So this is kind of the group that you're looking at. But I know somebody out there can answer that question because we were talking about it a little bit yesterday. So who's willing to give do we repeat the question, Michael?
Yeah, just wondering who, who can tell us what the board does or why we exist?
My name is Kayden. I am in seventh grade and I believe that the job of the school board is to make decisions for the better of the schools and to make a lasting impact to make our school experience better.
I just got chills. Very good. Yes. And I think the important thing to um, remember to your point, Kayden, is that as a board, um, we really our job is the big picture, right? So we oversee things like policy and the budget, manage money and resources and things like, not really manage it, but we direct uh, the superintendent to manage um, those things. And it's really the superintendent um, who runs the district from day to day. And as a board, we have one employee really, and that's, that's our superintendent, Mr. Barry. So um, yeah, very, very good answer. Um, okay, I'm sure you all have some riveting creative writing to do after today's experience. Um, and with that, uh, we'll get to your questions. I understand you have some questions for us.
Great, thank you. Here's our first one.
Um, wait, is it, uh, my name is Cecilia and my, I'm in eighth grade. Um, what specific qualifications are required to be a member of the school board?
Let's kind of do this popcorn style. So anyone who feels compelled can, who wants to take this one? I like that. Dawn, you want to take this one?
So there really isn't very many qualifications. You have to be a um, citizen in the community and you have to have your um, live there for six months and be a registered voter. And that is it. Oh, and eighteen, yes.
Maybe you should talk about the different areas that you live and that's the positions that we have. Yeah, because I can't articulate that very well. Because I don't know how many there are exactly.
So the district is divided up into, we have Phoenix Talent and a little bit of Medford. And so on the board, there's three positions that are represent talent in the outline areas of talent, like up Wagner Creek. And then we have four positions that represent um, Phoenix and the Medford area and the outline area of um, those as well.
Yeah, so you have to you qualify to serve on the board by living in either of those zones. And then all of the voters in the district, anyone who lives in the district will get a ballot this May for the school board election. Um, and all of the voters in the district vote for all of those zones, whether you live in Medford or Talent or Phoenix, wherever you live, you vote for all of the positions that are up for election. So yeah, and other than that, I would just add, um, Sarah kind of made the point about the pool and we actually didn't know that, Sarah, that that goes back that far, but that's good, good detail. Um, I think one thing that's really important as far as a qualification for a school board member is to not have a specific agenda. You really have to be able to be a big picture thinker and look at things from that. We call it the thirty thousand foot perspective, right? Um, and, and have a, a global view, a big picture view of what's important to the community and the school district. And not be, you can have certain things that you're passionate about, but I think that's what makes the best board member, someone who's willing to really look at the big picture. So would you like to add something, please?
Yeah, uh, uh, these are not specifically qualifications, but they lend into why a person would want to be on the board. And that, first of all, I think we have to believe in public education. And uh, desire to help the youth of, of our community. Uh, we have to attend meetings, sometimes twice a month. And then there are other meetings as well, committee meetings. So we have to be able to uh, spend time on behalf of the district. We have to prepare for our meetings. We have to do our research. And uh, it's, like you said, it's a way of contributing to our community. So.
Awesome. We have some more questions, I understand? Go ahead.
My name is Jack Laughlin and I'm in seventh grade and I want to know what being a board member means to you.
One of the things that it means to me is that I get to
One of the things that it means to me is that I get to be a voice for my community. And I also get to be of service to you and your families. So that's one of the things that I hold in high regard and value.
Anyone else like to share?
Personal pride, uh, of being a member of the school board. Of finding a major contribution.
I like being able to be a part of the big decision-making processes and, uh, just being a voice for the community.
Our district's motto is excellence for everyone and one of the goals is creating lifelong learners. And I would say that serving in this role, um, I have learned a lot. There's, uh, understanding. So, um, one of the things we do, and Michael alluded to it earlier, is, um, we pass policies. So, um, the legislator. Make a law and then, um, those decisions filter down to the implementation by the school board. And so understanding that process and what your role is in that process. Has been really interesting to learn, you know, not just the scholastic song, you know, how to make a bill. You, you really under, you start to see how it all works together and how decisions that are made outside of your area really do impact. Decisions that we can make here to create the best education, um, for you guys. So, um, I would say learning.
There's one thing you have not learned though, and that is you're not gonna get that swimming pool.
Anyone else have anything to add? Such a good question. Thank you so much for the question. Go ahead.
Uh, my name is Haley and I'm in seventh grade. My question is, how do you deal with disagreements within the school board?
I think I want to speak to that.
Please.
Because I haven't been on the board a whole heck of a long time. So I wondered about this too. It's like, oh my gosh, is there gonna be like? Like we have to go out in the hall and settle it out in the hall or something? Or how does that work exactly? It's one thing of what I really enjoy on this board in particular is how we come to decisions. And it's okay to vote a different way than the rest of the board. That's why we have the number of people that we have. So I just feel like this group, um, we can leave those differences at the door. And still care for each other very deeply and know that we're doing a big work here. And that we can have impact on our community. So it's important that you, um, in this position that you. Like Michael said, don't have an agenda when you come to the table. I've been sitting in these meetings thinking I was gonna vote a certain way. And listening to my colleagues here, I changed how I was gonna vote in that because you have to be open to those things. So I think that's, that's how I look at this, that you have to be open coming in. And then you don't have so much of those, so many of those disagreements, if you will.
I look at it as everybody is so passionate and everybody wants to do the right thing. And sometimes we always, everybody's, what they think is best is not always on the same page. I mean, we all don't like the same ice cream, so we're not gonna always make the same decision. So I think that it's just respect for each other and that we all know that even if we don't agree. We are all trying to do what we think is best for our district and our community. And, um, and I think we all respect each other to know that if we disagree, it's only on this one thing. There's probably a hundred other things that we all agree on. So, um, they're very civil.
Yes, and one of the great things about how we make decisions is it's a democratic process. So things are brought before us that we need to make decisions about and we vote and the majority wins. Um, and we actually have a board operating agreement that we put together last year, I think. And one of the things that says is, um, once the vote is cast and the decision is made. That, uh, we all support the will of the board in moving forward with that decision. Whether we personally agreed with that decision or not, uh, the will of the board has spoken. And I will say, uh, my colleagues on this board do an incredible job of, uh, respecting. And supporting, uh, the will of the board and that democratic process. So. Works really well for us. If you do a little Googling, doesn't work so well in some other areas, but, uh, we have a really, a really good board. And a wonderful community. We have some more?
My name is Ryan Anderson and I am in eighth grade. I want to ask, how long does it typically take for you to come with a stump with a solution for a problem or issue? And what does that typically look like?
I take a long time. I am not a good, quick decision maker and, um. So the process is typically, um, reading through the policy. Or whatever it is that's coming before us and then really trying to talk, talk to people in the community about their perspective. On what, what we're gonna be talking about it. So when a policy comes to the board for us to make a decision on. We see it twice. We have at once an information and discussion time, which is the opportunity for us as a board to have dialogue about it. And then it'll come up again at our next meeting for us to take a vote. So, um, we have plenty of time to talk it over and, um, ask questions. Hear what our fellow board members and then talk to staff. My, um. We're volunteers. We don't, we don't get paid and, um, we're not in your classroom. We're not teachers in your classroom. We're not admins in your building. We, you know, we, um, so I want to hear what I call boots on the ground. Like, what do you think? This is gonna impact you. Um, this is gonna impact your students. What, you know, what do you think? And so, um, just try, really trying to information gather and find out. Um, so I, I'm really horrible at quick decisions. So, um, I appreciate the time, um, that they give us to do that.
Very good. Thank you. Um, and then you ask, I'm not sure, was your question about our individual decision-making process or how we make decisions as a board? It's like, as a board? Yeah, so Sarah kind of alluded to it. Um, so we meet officially twice a month. Um, and like she said, we have an agenda and so on the first agenda is information and discussion. Where we, um, learn about the things coming before us and then we take action on it at the next meeting. So typically two weeks in between. You know, we're a smaller, more nimble district, but we're, it's still government and so things aren't extremely fast. Um, and public meetings, our meetings have to take place in the public. We are not allowed to deliberate. Um, on topics with more than three board members, um, present. Due to public meeting law. And that's because, um, everything the board does is supposed to be inspected. Uh, by the citizens of the district. And so, uh, but typically two weeks. Um, some things we talk about for a long time throughout the school year, um, depending on the issues of the day. Um, but practically it's, it takes a couple of weeks before we can ask something. Sometimes, um, we have emergency meetings. Uh, we had a couple of emergency meetings, um, after the fire. And, uh, where we had to meet to discuss or decide certain things. So, um, but typically it's. It's a lot slower than when you go home and deciding what to eat for dinner. Um, it takes a while.
I wanted to say to that, if we're given this policy and then if we have any questions, we can direct those to. Uh, Mr. Barry and ask him questions about if we have any particular concern or issue with it. Then he can give us that information back and then we share it with the whole group. So, cause typically if one person, like when you're in a classroom. Someone has the question, they should raise their hand and ask it because probably other people have that question as well. So we're encouraged to also talk, um, and get more information if we need it, not just, you know, assume something and move on from there.
I just want to publicly thank this board because they took on a huge, huge, uh, lift. Of rewriting the whole policy manual, uh, over the last year. We had some policies from nineteen eighty-four, I think. Um, that were still in our policy manual. And so really updated all of those. That did take a little while. But that was a big lift for this board. All right, another question. One more, right up here.
Cora Weber and I'm in seventh grade and I want to know what's the hardest decision you've ever had to make?
Yeah, you know, I've been on the board for twenty-four years and I don't know of a hard decision. I mean, we just deal with the, the issues as they come up and they're not hard. That's my, my view on it.
Our district has a public charter school, Armadillo Tech. Some of you may have heard of it. And we, one of the things we were doing right as you were coming in was renewing their contract for five years. And five years ago, their contract rose up for renewal. And, um, that was a really hard decision because we were really looking at the leadership of Armadillo at that time. And looking to see if that was still gonna be a good, um, fit for a partner for our district. And so, um, that process of making that decision was, um, was a hard decision. Because, um, Armadillo Tech just had their birthday party on Saturday and they've been around for twenty-three years. And so, um, they weren't a new charter school. Um, and so anyway, that was a hard decision five years ago. I am, I'm glad of the decision that we made. I think we were a unanimous decision in renewing their charter. Um, five years ago and then we just unanimously renewed it again, um, now for another five years. Um, so we're, we're proud of the work that they're doing to serve the students that go, um, and proud of that partnership. Um, but that was a hard decision, I would say, five years ago to really step back and look and see. I didn't finish that sentence.
Can add, it's not really the hardest decision, but one of the most important is hiring the superintendent. And, um, so I think that that's really important because that we want someone that's going to. Work well with us, work well with the teachers and really have passion and, um. Wanted to make our district excellent. And so we fortunately hired Mr. Barry and the other, um, superintendents that I've been on the board with. And they've all been really great and have really driven and rose into the occasion. And so I feel like that is hard because if you, especially now, if Mr. Barry can't retire anytime soon. But if he did, finding replacements are really hard because we have such, we've had such great candidates come up. With such, such passion and knowledge. And so I think that's really hard to find someone that's going to fit and, and. Just keep on growing. And, um, so I think that's one of the hardest decisions for me.
This is not a specific decision, but I think, um, I think we all were impacted in a big way. By the Almeida fire, right? And many of our kids, some of you may have lost their homes or been displaced. Um, and so there was a lot of decisions that we had to make during that time, but they were really easy. Um, because, um, we knew we needed to, uh, support our communities, support families first and foremost. Um, and I think that, that's the key, right? Um, is when you're faced with a difficult decision on the school board, it's really important to put kids. And their families first. And if you do that, um, like Rick said, um, Rick is a person who for twenty-four years has done that. Um, and when you do that, it, it does make the decision really easy because it's in the best interest of, of you all, of our kids in the district. So. Thank you so much for the thoughtful, thoughtful questions. Um, did any of our board members have any questions for our students before we. Art for the day?
I have something. Does anyone want to share something that they feel they could benefit from? Like what could happen here at the middle school for you to make things a better space for you to be learning in? It's okay to share your thoughts about it. It's a safe place. Thank you for that.
My name is Elsa Bombard and I think that it would be great if we could have an ethics club at the school. Because that it really encourages kids not to, um, just think that people are a jerk because they don't agree with them. And I was thinking that instead of just having a club where basically like, um. You rebut whatever your opponent says. And instead of just treating them like an opponent, you just think of them as another person. And they might be confused about something or whatever, but not thinking about them just as like someone who you don't like. And also, um, I think that it would, like, there might not be that many kids in, um, the club or whatever. But it'd just be a nice place for kids to express their opinions without, at least hopefully without feeling like they're gonna be. Made fun of or, um, had people say mean and intentionally like aggressive things because they're saying that.
I love that. Sounds like a speech and debate person coming into the high school, just saying.
Very good. Great idea. And I hope that you'll talk to Ms. Holden about that, um, or anybody really, teachers or. Um, your assistant principals. Um, that's a great idea and, uh, I'm not, I'm not telling you what to do. But, um, but I think, uh, I, you know, I think one thing that, um, is important to remember is. Uh, you're, the staff here wants to hear your ideas like that. So please, uh, if you see something. Um, that you think your school would benefit from, talk to a teacher, talk to a principal. Um, they want to hear from you. Um, they're here for you, right? Um, and so that wouldn't be a board decision. But I think it's a great idea and, and something worth exploring for sure. Yeah. Anything else?
I was gonna say that there has been, um, several things that students have brought up during these meetings. Such as culinary class. We have culinary class at the high school. There has been things about food. Um, and so when we made decisions about, um, Sodexo and stuff. And, um, different things like that, we're able to bring that, those, that information to make our decisions. So anything is really helpful because you know, we might not make, be making the decision tomorrow, but we might, that might come up. Cause some of us sit on different groups and so sometimes I might be on the committee to find someone to do food services. Or for planning, um, classes or something. And then that information, then I can go, oh, yes, that was talked about. I don't know when, but I know it was talked about. So I think that it's really important to share these ideas. Because, um, we've seen lots of great things come from good conversations from students. And I think it's really important to have those conversations.
Anything else? All right. So I'm gonna do a shameless plug. Um, speaking of democracy, it is, it's election season. And so three of our board members are up for election. And I just want to encourage you, I don't know if you know this, but only one out of every five, uh, voters in our district. Votes in school board elections. So I think towards the end of this month, your parents will get, uh, a, uh. Packet in the mail with the voter's pamphlet that has all the information about all the candidates. It's already, has it been mailed? It's been mailed. Okay, the voter's pamphlet's already out. And then the, the actual ballots will come out the end of this month, so probably the end of next week. So, um, when you see those come in the mail, you'll see a white envelope and it'll say Jackson County. I hope that you will bring that ballot and the voter's pamphlet to your parents or your family at home and say. Hey, it's really important that you vote in this school because these people, uh, are making decisions about, um, our school community. So thank you so much for coming today and for your great questions. Um, and, uh, just what a great group of kids too. My goodness, yeah. Thank you so much for coming. We'll take a ten-minute recess and I'm back. Are back. Don't make me start singing that. Um. Okay, we left off passing the RFP Design Services for T S T M S. design services for T S TMS. And now we're going to item H three, which is the RFP for Culver Fields Civil Engineering Services. Brent?
Yeah, we um, haven't wasted any time. Just got approved a couple of weeks ago. And this has been, we've started this process a while back and um, this is for your approval. Uh, ZCS is a um, partner of ours that uh, they actually did that uh, high school uh, turf field and the track and designed all that. And so um, we're really excited. They, they wanted to participate in our Culver Field uh, design. This is just simply the first part of that to go through and talk to um, uh, you know, the different groups and, and really kind of hear what uh, our, our school, our community want, want to see in that space. And they will help design that. And they've done a very good job for us in the past. So we recommend this contract to be approved so we can get working on it.
Excellent. I hear motion.
I move to award the contract for design services for Culver Fields Recreation Park to ZCS Engineering and Architecture.
I second that.
Moved by Rebecca, seconded by Polly. Any discussion? I just, uh, just want to thank John and, and Brent and the team for moving quickly on this stuff. It's quite a process to do these kinds of projects and as you all, all you bond people know. Um, so uh, thanks for getting going on this. Um, we will take it to a vote. Rebecca?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes. Item H four, board policy EFA local wellness.
Yeah, this is making a, a big policy bigger, uh, because uh, recommending deleting the AR and essentially putting a lot of the AR in there. Uh, I want to thank Denise and a team of our uh, wellness committee folks in our buildings to go through there. Um, this is something, and also Debbie and Amy from Sodexo. Uh, this is our recommendations and we, we talked about this a little bit last time. And this is really a lot of current practice that we've uh, done and where the optional language is. And um, yeah, for your approval. And then the, the second part of it is just deleting that AR uh, on the next vote.
Okay, we have a motion.
I move to adopt the recommended changes to policy EFA local wellness as presented. And thank you to all of the folks that work really hard and congrats. Like I think that's really neat that things were already in this policy. Or um, there's a lot of work to make sure that this policy is being better.
Thank you, Nancy.
I'll second that.
Moved by Nancy, seconded by Polly. Any discussion? Further discussion? Okay, Rebecca?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
I vote yes. Policy passes. Item H five, EFA AR.
Yeah, just formally uh, deleting the AR needs to be board action.
Motion?
I move to delete policy EFA AR local wellness program.
Moved by Rebecca, seconded by Polly. Discussion? Rebecca?
Seconded by Nancy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We unmuted at the same.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you for clarifying that. Polly?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right. Moving right along, information and discussion, facilities and bond update.
Yeah, John's attending a um, uh, his statewide organization with facility management has their conference this week. And uh, he's actually a part of the uh, board of that uh, organization. So again, another representative in, in our district that has some statewide uh, voice on, on some um, things that happen in our school. He is presenting there. So it's, it's great to have some uh, leadership in that regard to, to share with uh, colleagues from around the state. Took some team members up there as well um, to learn um, our new electrician uh, went up there. Um, or not electrician, but uh, the uh, employee that Bob, Bob Stapp, yeah, HVAC and, and uh, there was a lot of classes up there. He's doing a great job. And so it's good to learn from other colleagues that do that job. Uh, nothing much on the facilities besides what I mentioned in my superintendent report about um, uh, bringing back an approval for the construction of um, reconstructing some space for a health center.
Any questions? Okay, financial update?
You do have a financial update and Yasmin's hard uh, working on the budget, which is um, a- as you know, the last several years really leveraging all the grants and the funds and the general budget is a huge task. Uh, she does an amazing job with that. Um, I, I will share that she was on a call with um, our uh, other colleagues that are involved in forty twenty HB forty twenty-six with wildfire recovery. And there has been some adjustments that we just found out this morning as she texted me when I was here. Uh, that there may, might not be as many funds um, for that uh, resource as we continue to um, go through the next two years. Uh, there is not a many, uh, it has to do with the overall ADM in the state. Um, uh, the ODE's financial specialist essentially said that it would potentially cost thirty-five million dollars as opposed to the approved twenty-five million dollars to help keep all the districts whole in that regard. So I just want to mention it to you now. It's kind of hot off the presses. Uh, it is next year it impacts us uh, by about a million and a half dollars, which is not good news. But we will have more information uh, from Yasmin as we get closer to budget season. But um, didn't want to necessarily share that bad news, but I didn't want that to linger. Um, because that, that's a, that's a huge challenge for us. And that means when we look at attrition and meeting our budgetary needs and FTE uh, to match our student population, it, it, it takes some deeper dives in that sooner than we thought. Even though we had some good plans to do that next year anyway. One other thing is just the uh, advocacy for a uh, a state school fund. That it looks tougher and tougher to move from that nine point nine number. Um, but that also will have a big impact on us moving forward if that's a, if that's the final number for the next biennium.
Sorry, I'm just uh, digesting that news. Um, so I guess we could go back and read the bill, but um, I, I guess there was a, there's a provision in the bill itself that um, allows them to just change what they approved a couple of years ago.
Yeah, it, it actually has to do with the overall funding formula. And so um, Yasmin will be able to explain it more. She had a uh, meeting with, with them, an hour meeting um, just a little bit ago. Uh, but she'll, she'll be able to explain it in financial terms and why that's the, why that is the uh, implication. Um, there is one potential uh, possibility of um, having some adjustments to the ADM that the ODE representative shared that, that may allow us to get a higher percentage of those funds, um, which could lessen the impact, but um, but it is, it is uh, something that is very concerning and that we just heard today.
What does that look like for her preparing next year's budget with that now new information? Because that doesn't give very much time to now adjust big numbers.
Yeah, it, it doesn't. And what it, what it'll most likely impact is the N B B balance. Just reduce that um, a little bit. We'll try to make some cuts elsewhere as well. Um, but that's, that's where we'll likely see it. Um, i- i- as, as far as it for now, for the next year. And then again, um, when we end this biennium, depending on where that state school fund number is. Uh, you know, the projections that we shared is, is less than eight percent, down to four or five percent. N B B balance after this bi- biennium and the board um, policy is, is eight percent. So that would reduce that even uh, number that we have projected that we shared last time. So I hate for you to digest uh, some bad news all in a few minutes, but um, it is a, it will be a big impact on uh, our potential next two years.
I guess my question is, I, I know that we're all digesting it and you just found out today, so you don't know any of the answers. But um, I guess it's not really a question. It's more of a comment. Uh, when, when this is digested and a plan has been done, please let us know so that we can do whatever we can, write our legislators, go up to Salem. Um, and uh, I think that this is something that we need to be vocal about. And I would be more than happy to help be vocal about that when the time is ready.
That's a really good point and I welcome your questions because this will definitely be a follow-up. I mean, you know, Yasmin doesn't text me very often with urgent message. Um, and so uh, there will be some follow-ups. And, and to tell you the truth, we were actually thinking with my uh, fellow colleagues, a superintendent saying, if there is additional funds of that twenty-five million dollars, could we get legislation to have that extend after this biennium? Now we're talking about, oh my gosh, we're not even get the funds we were promised. So um, so there's still a lot of discussion and we'll definitely know how we can advocate to make sure at least we get uh, what was um, what was promised and, and then uh, continue to advocate for.
Ha- has anyone been in touch with Representative Marsh yet? I imagine not.
No, this, this happened at nine AM. And so, um, once we get more information and we have a clearer picture of what that means and why.
Yeah.
Cause she'll ask the same questions you guys are. Um, then we'll, we'll make sure we have that conversation.
Okay. Yeah, I think that'll be important to see if there's anything that could be done working with our representatives who supported this unanimously, by the way, so.
Well, and um, the other two districts, right, were one of three or four districts that were part of this funding.
Yeah, we're one of three kind of Lincoln County uh, where what's lumped in there, but their percent was very, very small. Um, but they got lumped in there at, at the end, but it's really the three districts have had a huge impact. So and that's, that's where um, well, I won't say that because I don't know that for sure, but there could be some adjustments where we overall could get a higher percentage of, from those the overall four districts that we figured we were going to get.
I guess my frustration is that um, I know we've had issues with this or like it's been issue after issue and we think, oh, we're in the clear and then there's another issue. And we bring it up to legislators or um, someone else and it, I think everyone's kind of frustrated because the intent was there. The um, work was done, this was supposed to happen. And then somewhere all the time the draw, the ball gets dropped. And um, it's really a concern um, moving forward. I mean, this one is financially impacting us. But I see this happening a lot where legislation is saying one thing and then to the follow-through and the commitment from the different groups that didn't really have the buy-in, don't, don't follow through. And I think that this is going to be a challenging problem. Um, but I think that this is definitely something that we need to follow through with. And I think when I, when I talked to the legislators before about the issue a couple of months ago, um, it was about how funding was coming in and there was a lot of questions that were not getting answered. And um, a few of us um, spoke up to the legislators and it got resolved quickly. But I think this is something that's happening all the time is that things are getting dropped and the, and then it's getting resolved quickly. So I don't know how to stop it, but um, yeah, it's just kind of frustr- it's frustrating because you call, the legislators are like, what? What happened? Why are you, you haven't got the money? And so it's just, I don't know where the disconnect is. And I think it's something we need to pay attention to because I, I have a feeling that this is going to be something we face um, and other issues as well. That makes sense.
It, it definitely does. And I, I, I agree with you. I think we just got some information that helped us to where we can pull the funds and how we actually get that. That was just a couple of months ago. And, and now we have this, but let me, let me um, clarify and gather the information and really some talking points and understand it a little bit more and we can, we can start making a plan from there.
Okay. So anything else uh, on that topic you have as a question for Brent too? He doesn't have, oh, he doesn't have answers, but if there's a specific question, uh, please reach out to Brent. Um, or myself or Dawn, um, or Sarah on the LPC. So um, yeah, um, I have a feeling the three of us will be discussing this quite a bit, um, and the four of us uh, with Brent. So uh, yeah, they certainly won't. They haven't heard from us yet. So, and they definitely will. Um, okay, legislative OSBA update.
I have a lot to say. I've been at a lot of meetings. I think I've been to like five meetings in the last eight, seven days or something like that. It's, it's a lot. Um, so I'll try to, so first of all, um, well, let's see, I brought it up here because I don't remember. Senate Bill two eighty-three is a big bill that is talking about um, a whole bunch of stuff. But some of the things we've talked about before, I think in this meeting is um, having uh, special, and Tiffany can maybe help me with this, but having those that have a certain percent, those staff members that have a cer- certain percentage of time with IEP kids um, would get paid more. Uh, which I think they should get paid more. My concern, and I think there's a lot of concerns that it, it becomes a not my kid, not my, not my um, issue. And, and I don't, I'm not really sure this bill is um, actually what's best for kids. Um, I question that, but um, the House has talked about it, I think twice this week. It's such a big um, bill. I haven't had a chance to see what they've talked about or, or, or have listened to it. But it's been talked about the House Committee Education twice. There will be testimony coming up for that one. Um, also ten forty-five, which we've talked about. That is going to, that's in the Rules Committee right now, but it's probably going to go to the House. And that's the bill that's talking about um, curriculum and um, a whole bunch of other things that would maybe tie school boards hands. And that um, has a new, there's a new amendment, but everyone says would be better, but no one's showing it. Which makes me very nervous on, if it's so great, why aren't you showing it to me? Um, and uh, so we'll see how that goes. Obviously the state school fund uh, Friday. They're having the uh, Ways and Means Roadshow. I think they're going to have a Zoom one later. They keep on saying they are, but they haven't announced when that is. Okay, it's the first one. Thank you, Sarah. Um.
Do you have anything you want to add to legislative stuff before I move on to the other things that I attended this month or week?
Just a reminder that um, ten forty-five really uh, talks about how school boards local school boards are going to be able to govern. Um, and um, seismic shift was the word that OSBA used around uh, that particular piece of legislation. And, and they've been in work groups, but like Dawn shared, we just haven't seen any good update. Um, so um, what else? Oh, roadshow, yes. Um, the Ways and Means Roadshow tomorrow in Roseburg. And um, and then this, we're looking potentially at a date um, for Phoenix Talent to go up in May. Um, seeing maybe when Senate Bill two eighty-three um, or ten forty-five or um, something else that may pop up except on anyone's radar right now. Um, so looking at potentially going up um, to provide testimony or um, just meet with legislators and, and have some conversations if, if possible. So that's all I have to share.
Yeah, that's why I thought it was important to figure out that if we're going to go up there. Um, I went to Pace that we had our, our uh, Um, I went to Pace, then we had our our Pace meeting. Um, our board meeting, which are always interesting, and then they had Pace Days. Um, I'm so appreciative of what Pace does in their pre-loss program. Uh, we had, we had some really good talks. This lady was talking about sexual assault and molestation, and we had a speaker. And I believe they talked to the. Athletic directors as well, because the Athletic Director Conference was the day after when we left. Um, but also there was a person there. Brian Flannery, I believe is his name, and he is a. Ex SRO for Salem Kaiser, and he was, if you've seen. We have the threat assessment policy that we use, and the legislation is talking about having that. Um, used in all schools, and he was part of putting that together. And he. Basically remind me a lot of Aaron Hall coming in and saying, okay, I'm gonna change this, we need to look at policies. He his knowledge of school safety and threat assessments and his information was amazing, I. Um, before the meeting, this guy, one of my fellow board members, they weren't meeting going to, and I said this one, and he's like, I've seen him twice. And I'm debating about seeing him a third time because I learned something new every time. He was also in charge of security for the courthouse, the federal. Um, District Courthouse in Salem and the judges in Salem, and so he has lots of information, so. I have passed that on to staff because if we have conversations. Um, with where we need questions or or expertise outside of our community, he may be a really good one. To reach out to when we're making decisions, I know that I've been really trying to do my research on this, and he was answering a lot of questions and his. Um, approach I thought was really great, and the way he and he did the analogies of threats and stuff using cats. As examples was really good, so I think that that's something, so I'm really appreciative that they brought that there. Um, I went to the rural schools yesterday, we have approved our. Goals, missions, we've approved everything, so it's going off to the lawyers, it will go to the next step will be. The June OSBA Board Meeting, if it gets approved, then then it will go on to every district, we'll get to vote. On if we should have a rural schools caucus, hopefully they vote yes, and it will be in effect. At the beginning of the year, and we can start doing some ideas that we had thought of and we have a small budget, but. Um, some really great things I think are in the next year are gonna come out of this committee, I really think so, so. That is all I have to say, if you have any questions, let me know.
Um, just to save the date, um, we've seen on some notes, but I don't know that it's on the website, August eleventh through the thirteenth is the summer conference. In Salem.
Thank you, do we know where in Salem then?
Believe it's at that convention center that they usually have. At the ground and then the grand house that I think it's called the Salem Convention Center.
Eleven through the thirteenth. Of August, okay.
And then I think they've announced the annual convention too, but there's talks about changing it and the rural schools. Caucus, I guess, or or committee is talking about. Not having, you know, like if we want to support rural schools, we're giving a lot of money back to the cities and having these conferences. But why aren't we having these at the schools and there was talk, you know. Uh, some people, the pushback is, well, there's not a big, there's not a big enough venue, and someone's like, well, you can do it at a school. You there's, you could have the opening at a gymnasium, there's lots of classrooms for breakout sessions. And then there's usually lots of local hotels and restaurants close by that would be able to. So if we thought outside the box, we could move these around and not just have them in. Portland and Salem, uh, because I think it's important that we we make everyone feel. Heard and we support different communities around Oregon because they all support schools, so that's something we're working on. So we're, it's kind of on limbo of what we're gonna do because we're we're in discussions on. If we think, you know, there's, there's big places, there's, you know, fairgrounds, there's different places, we don't just have to have it at a convention center. And when we, Sarah and I had our legislative meeting, we were the first ones to have it in a school, all these other places rent out places or have it at a library. And they're like, well, this was unique, and it's like, we're a school talking about. Schools, this should be in a school, like, it seems weird not to have it in a school. So I think it's, I think a lot of the members on this rural schools committee are really like, we need to start thinking outside the box because we're. And really involve the role, the communities because having a convention in Portland is not a big deal to the city of Portland. But having a convention in. Phoenix or on, you know, Brookings or. Bend or not Bend, but Le Pine or, yeah, all those places, Clamas Falls makes a difference to to those communities, so. That's something we're working on.
That's great. Great. Community recovery update. Anyone, I I missed the last meeting.
Not necessarily an update, but we are excited to have the long-term recovery group come. I I don't think they're gonna be here next time because I think ODP is gonna be the program report. Um, but I think the following. The when it works out for them, I just said sometime in the next couple of months, maybe heading into the next year, but we may have them in. Last meeting in May or a meeting in June, uh, which which hopefully will get some. Uh, really good clear information, I don't know if you get their long-term recovery group newsletter. Um, I can certainly forward that on to you and you could probably subscribe from there, just came out. Yesterday, I think that's the first one I've actually seen. So that might be a good way to stay connected as well.
Thank you, and next we have policies that will come before us. At the next meeting for action, first is. Uh, an AR or policy A C A R discrimination complaint. Brent, did you wanna give us the reader's digest on these?
I I don't have much, it's just all red language that happens to do that, and it's just the AR portion of that.
I have a question about this policy. So. Sarah just mentioned, well, anyone can do this, and my question is, how do we inform the public that they have. This pathway?
In practice, sometimes how that happens is, um, you know, we we have a complaint or have a discussion and say, hey, here's a process that we can follow. And and other than that, it's, you know, it's in this public meeting and on on policy, which that's not necessarily informing the public because people don't. Come to policy, but. We would be have situations that arise, uh, we we direct them to policy, whether it's this one or KL.
I'm just wondering of the accessibility about this and then also. I mean, has there been a discussion? Maybe there has been, but has there been a discussion of having these policies translated, like, not necessarily like. A Phoenix Town School District, because that's a huge undertaking, but from like the state. And not again, not not putting that responsibility on you all, because that's huge. Um, but I'm just curious of what the state's planning on doing now.
There has been discussions at OSBA about this, um, a lot of. A lot of districts have said, you know, we would like our policies in different languages. OSBA doesn't have the capacity to do that right now. Um, it's a lot of time consuming and especially with, as you know, or as you probably know. Legal, the legal words in the translation, you've got to make sure that it's clear and it it takes a lot of time, and so. It's been discussed probably once a year, if not more at OSBA, that, hey, we 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 need this. It's just something that OSBA says they they don't have the capacity for, and the state, I don't think. Since they write the polit, we, OSBA writes the policy, they write the. The law, the dislation, there's no one else really to do that, so I don't know. It's kind of like a, what do you do, like? Yeah, I mean, I will bring it, next time it's brought up again, I always say, well, we would love it to, you know, have them in Spanish and and I always back the. The but OSBA is like, well, this would, and and they're saying it would take longer for them to get out and that, you know, there's. We always hear all of that, so I think continue to work it on them and maybe when there's an OSBA event or something. Bring it up, you know, if you are talking to OSBA staff like Jim Green or or who's in policy. Spencer and say, we would really appreciate these in Spanish, and I think the more we bring this up. And the more we're gonna have, I think they're gonna have a survey out about what. Um, schools would like to see for services, so I think constantly saying it may help, I don't know, but I do know it's brought up and I. Do know that some districts have, like Portland has like ninety-seven languages. And obviously ninety-seven language policies is a lot, and they would have to decide which ones they want, but I think at least English, Spanish and maybe. Some other one that is. Used a lot in Oregon might be beneficial.
I think Brent has an update on this too.
Yeah, so it, first of all, that's a, that's an interest of ours, and we have been advocating, we've even talked locally how we can partner with that. With with other school districts, nobody else has that as well, but we have some, for example, a policy like this or some other ones that are. You know, the, not necessarily, you don't need to translate the whole policy, but you can start with the ones that are matter the most. Uh, and the person who translates our board notes has started on that, so we have probably about. Uh, five or six done and five or six in the hopper as well. And so, so we have done that, and though we are really cognizant of the legal term in the translation, we feel like. First and foremost, the information needs to be there and work on the other stuffs.
I'm just thinking as a systems level, right, like we frequent frequently talk about accessibility and then I hear like, well, there's no capacity and I'm thinking. Oh, my God, which is probably similar to what you're all saying, like you're giving us more things to do, but without the funding to do the additional. That we're being asked to do. Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I I was thinking of that accessibility, especially since this one seems like more. Immunity, like it would really benefit community and. I don't know about this, but so many systems that I'm like familiar with, they are on complaint driven systems. So then people go, everything is going really great, when in reality, things might not be going as great, but simply we're not, we don't have like a process for people to. Step into and help us be better in the way in which we serve our kids and our communities. So I was thinking about that, and then the other pieces. Um, in addition to, and it's not necessarily like a policy, but like what is the process for staff, like I'm thinking of myself, I. If I was to make like a formal complaint with my employer, would I feel like safe, would there be like? Fear of retaliation, you know, what does that mean? And what does that process look like for here, the Phoenix Talent School District?
Well, it's dictated by policy, it's great, I mean, and I know there's always a a sense of fear for that, but there are processes and we try to create a safe space for that. To to happen and share and and work through those. Those, um, you know, complaints and process and we field those through. Our HR and then we take the proper channels to kind of review those and and go through that and make sure, you know, we respond in a timely manner and kind of follow up.
That's helpful.
I have a question on that, um, so does the unions, I know that they have represented, you know. Representatives that they can go talk to, I forgot the name of them. Building, well, no, building webs, but also they have someone if they, if there's an issue or or they help kind of represent them, I don't know that. Something like that is, do they, do they have a program to for staff members that would. Want to have assistance on feeling safe in in the buildings, is that something, I don't know, I'm just, I know that's kind of out of your proof.
Yeah, I'm not, as far as you associate.
Yeah, like, do the associations have anything to help their? Because that seems to me that would be more of a safe place, having a, having an association. Um, versus maybe the HR, you might, I don't know, I was just wondering if they had something or if that was something that they've ever talked about.
So I think if you read the. I I'm not telling you, you need to read the CPA, but I'm in negotiations right now, so I've read the contract. Many times in the last few weeks and there is. Staff in the union does have the right to representation at meetings and things like that, so, um, yeah, and. Yeah, I just want to say, Nancy, this is one of those things where, why I'm so thankful you're on this board because. I thought we already had the policies translated, I thought there was a button you could click to download it in Spanish, and so. I think you're shining a light on something really, really important. Particularly policies like this that are for the public, right? Um, and so thank you for. Proactively starting on this work, Denise and Brent, your team. Because it is important and there are some challenges, but you know. Yeah, inclusivity is hard, but it's necessary, so.
I mean, I recently had a conversation with a family who had a question specifically about this. And I was like, oh, and you know, the. It's interesting because sometimes I'm like, we're doing all the things and everything's working out really well, and then I. Remember, different people have different experience and experiences, and it's not necessarily ill intentioned. From the district, it's just, we haven't had that experience, so we might not be looking at this. Through a, through a lens of accessibility and. Equitable resources and access to information, and then, um, you know, part of the conversation was like. Different people might feel really reserved, like, no, I don't want to do that, it'll create more issues and. This and that and so forth, which is really real, right, and it isn't necessarily like the people are trying to intentionally be mean. Sometimes people, when we don't know the process, it creates a lot of fear for that lack of information, so then it prevents us from. Advocating for our kiddos in a way that is more meaningful. And I I mean, I was just thinking about this because. Earlier today, um, Dawn, you mentioned, you know, your kid was on on an IEP, and how can you advocate, how can you? Help people and. I had a kid that was not in an IEP, and then when I had a kid that wasn't an IEP, that was like a whole different world, and I just remember feeling so lost and. Not wanting to like. You know, ask for anything else, and now that I look back in retrospect, I feel so terrible that I didn't support my kid, like his mom. Didn't support my kid for fear of, I didn't know the process, I didn't know how to. Come into this, I didn't know how to advocate for my own kid, and anyways, I'm just processing out loud, but I'm just thinking of. The different experiences different people have and at different times, I mean, it's the same person, but at different times I have had. More knowledge and more autonomy than others, and I'm I'm just being really thoughtful of. The experiences that other people are feeling that we might not never know about simply because. There isn't a pathway. Or the pathway isn't super clear for those folks.
Yeah, for sure. Is this particular AR on the shortlist to be translated soon, or has it already, is there a way to make that possible? Yeah, I think that would be good, and I imagine, I mean, if you read through this, it it. A lot falls on the principal in this AR, and so I imagine there's some notification and. You know, training that will happen with our principals in support of. In support of this procedure, so, uh, yeah, very, very good discussion, thank you, Nancy and everyone.
And thank you, Michael, I'm always impressed because I never know how to ask for things, I think I, I'm like, let me tell you a story of all these things and. Michael's like, can we make sure this happens? I have so much to learn.
Well, it's so good you asked a question, because I didn't know that process was already happening with the translation, and so if that process is already happening, I think we have a very. A very good candidate for a policy to be translated quickly, right, so, yeah. Awesome, do you have anything to add to that?
Just that it may make up our funding differences that we could sell them to other districts. But it 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 is mind boggling that this is not happening or OSBA is behind the tide. I will tell you, ODE under Colts leadership just recently has done done a lot better of accessibility and translation. So, so, yeah, so it's. Definitely in the works and.
Nothing like systems to remind us and to be humble that even though we might have power and authority and influence, we still mess it up.
Yeah, that's big work and important work.
I think there's a district, if I can remember right, up in Portland that has done some of their own translation as well. I think there's a district, if I can remember right, up in Portland that has done some of their own translation as well. I can't, probably one of the bigger ones, um. Either Portland Public or Beaverton. So you might want to reach out to them and see, so we're not duplicating the work or maybe we can share. And say, hey, we'll do three policies and you do three policies or something like that. I don't know. I'm just thinking outside the box.
I like the idea of a paid policy translation service generating from the Phoenix Talent School District to make up our. Funding gap that we just learned about today in the middle of the meeting. Thank you, Brent. Yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, the next is, uh, Board Policy IGBHD Program Exemption. So a, a lot of red language.
Yeah, it just simply clarifies that if somebody opts out of a straight required program or, or learning activity, that there is going to be. An alternative activity, uh, and so, and that's all just, um, by legislation and we, we. The blue language, we, uh, like to accept teacher organ principal.
Makes sense. Any questions on that one? Uh, expulsion, J seven, uh, policy J G E.
Yeah, this, this essentially, uh, is red language, but then the blue language that we recommend is our current policy. And so that's what we recommend for the board. And the others are just dictated by statute.
Questions on that one? Okay, and then, uh, J eight is, uh, policy K L A R Public Complaint.
Yeah, I, um, I feel like this policy comes up at least once a year.
Once a month.
And so, uh, it is red, red language and on that. And so it's just recent statute and legislation. And after this legislative session, it may come up again.
It will come up again. Just speaking from experienced people, okay? Um, L, uh, yeah, any questions on this one? Okay.
I was just going to say, um, payback on Nancy on this one. This one would also probably be a good, uh, Spanish one if we don't already have it.
It's already.
Okay, I thought we did, but I was just making sure.
Okay. And, uh, the next meeting's agenda is there for your review. Specifically, somebody had requested. I think it was you, Sarah, uh, student representative discussion. We talked about putting that on the, uh, information. Was there anything else that we missed? I feel like there was something else that was requested that. I forgot to check with Denise about it. I mean, I'm sure if I, if we asked about it. Okay. Okay, if you, if, I could just be making that up. So if you had a request for something else, please remind me, but I think we got. We definitely got the student rep discussion on there. So. Great. And with that, we are adjourned.